I'm going to call this meeting of the Lawndale City Council to order. I'm going to ask Madam City Clerk to give us the roll call.
Okay, good evening. Mayor Protem Cuevas?
Here.
Councilmember Suarez?
Here.
Councilmember Kearney?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman Gorman?
Here.
Mayor Pauline Miles?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Next item on our agenda is our flag salute, which is going to be led by Councilwoman Bernard Suarez, and we're going to hear a word of inspiration from Pastor Dwight Dooley from Cavalry Chapel, South Bay.
Please stand, face the flag, right hand over your heart, ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing.
Again, it's an honor to be here and to be in front of this awesome board. And you know, we're getting ready to have Thanksgiving, and I want to tell you that you guys are awesome, and I thank you for the work you're doing, especially in the giving that you give to this community, awesome work of God. He says, "It blessed us a nation whose God is the Lord and who has chosen as his own inheritance. The Lord looks from heaven. He sees the sons of men and the women from the place of his dwelling and in all the inhabitants of the earth. He fashions their hearts individual, and he considers all their works." Father, I thank you for this council. Lord, for truly, they are the physical persons that you have given this authority to look upon all people, for you have chosen all people as your inheritance. And I thank you that, as these men and women who hear from each of the individuals who will be here tonight, who have concerns and issues and things, I thank you, Father, that you've given this council a heart to hear them and to help them and to bless them with not only today, but a future for tomorrow. So, Father, I pray for great wisdom, great understanding, great knowledge on both, the council and those who are coming here today to address the council. Give them great wisdom, understanding, and let the people know that this city is for them and for their future. So, Lord, bless this council. Pour out your Spirit. Direct us, help us, and give us wisdom, and in the Jesus' name we pray. Amen. God bless you guys.
Thank you, Pastor. We thank you for being here tonight. Let's have our public safety report. Let's hear from our Sergeant Jason Smith. Sergeant Smith. Justin, okay, let's adjust his name to Justin. Sergeant Smith, hurry.
Excuse me. Good evening, Council. Mr. Mayor, I'm here tonight to present the public safety report for November 6th through November 20th of this year. I'd like to bring out first some notable investigations. During the reporting period, deputies assigned to Lawndale Service Center recovered one ghost gun, one unregistered pistol, one extended magazine with ammunition that was related to a high school threat incident. And then Deputy Jackson Hill recovered a pistol, suspected fentanyl, suspected psilocybin, suspected methamphetamine, suspected cocaine, suspected marijuana, and fentanyl during one traffic stop. And then I'd like to highlight the great work that our detective is doing, Detective Josue Torres. During this reporting period, a student from a local high school in Lawndale received a threat over the Internet of school violence. Detective Torres received the notification of the threat in the late night, early morning hours, and immediately began working the case. Due to Detective Torres' diligence, the person making the threats was detained the very next morning, and nobody was injured. That's right here. And then just an update regarding an incident that happened in June of this year. An assault with a deadly weapon occurred at a business on Hawthorne and Marine in the city of Lawndale. During that time, Detective Torres got the case, identified the suspect, and he was recently arrested, and a felony filing for assault with a deadly weapon went through at the Torrance Courthouse. And now, some community engagement items. Recently, there has been a concern in this surrounding neighborhood of suspicious people going door-to-door offering unsolicited services. I want to remind the Lawndale residents to be cautious about who they opened the door for and let into their residence. People can call the Lawndale Service Center, the residents can call the Lawndale Service Center, to report any suspicious people, and I just want to remind them to be prepared to provide a brief description of the person and why they believe that this person is engaged in criminal activity. And then, it was last meeting, it was my pleasure to introduce our new captain, Captain Palomino. It is now my pleasure to announce another Coffee with the Cough event where she will be hosting. And this will be December 13th at the Target, the same one that was before, at Hawthorne and Marine. Hawthorne and Rosecrans, correction. And that will be from 9:00 to 10:00. December 13th, 9:00 to 10:00, Hawthorne and Rosecrans Target. And that concludes my report. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you for that report. Are there any questions other? Yes, Mayor?
I would like to tag on to what you just said, because I feel like also residents need to be reminded that right now we're having an issue with people watching their phone or their GPS and coming up to people's homes and saying, "Hey, you have my whatever it is." Again, don't open your door. Seek help first, don't open your door to that individual. And that just happened to a neighbor of ours, and even though he's a grown man, it was alarming to him at 1:00 in the morning when somebody came up to his door claiming, "You have my stuff." And he says, "What are you talking about? Well, GPS tells me you have my stuff. My stuff is here." So, that also, let's not open our doors at 1:00 in the morning.
Yes, I agree.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant, for that report. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is a presentation by the Honorable Senator Stephen Bradford, the hardest-working legislature in Sacramento, representing us finely in Sacramento. Thank you for being here as you come forward. He's going to give a legislative briefing, as you do every year around about this time, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. It is truly an honor to be back before this council. It has been a practice from mine for the last 13 years since I represented this city in the legislature, first as an Assemblyman, now in the Senate, to bring a legislative update. And as you all are aware, our legislative year starts in January and it ends in September. Our last session was September 14th, which leaves the governor 30 days to sign all bills. So, we usually do this after the governor has signed our vetoed bills. And so, I'm here today to present this. And just let me start with the budget. You know, California's faced challenges this year, including severe damage from climate storms and a tougher budget picture than we've seen in recent years. We're going to provide some facts regarding the budget. If California was a nation, we would be the fourth-leading economy in the world. This year, the legislature approved a state budget for the fiscal year 2023, 2024, in the amount of $311 billion, consisting of about $226 billion for the general fund, $82 billion for special funds, and about $3 billion from bond funds. In doing so, we also addressed a budget deficit of $31 billion this year. Last year, you might recall, we had a reserve of $97.5 billion shortly after COVID and was able to provide checks to all eligible citizens in the state of California. But storms, which resulted in a declaration of natural disaster, caused the state to delay collection of income tax revenue this year, which has resulted in this year's budget deficit. Recognizing that we had to manage a budget deficit but also protect important state programs, the legislature focused on making this year's budget protect our progress made over the last several years. I'm proud to have worked with my colleagues to protect our progress by funding important new initiatives on homelessness, infrastructure, climate, and housing, and continuing efforts to help ensure every community in California can be safe and prosperous. Thanks to more than a decade of responsible budgeting by the legislature and the governor, we have been able to pass a state budget that protects the middle class, include at higher levels of rainy day reserves, and maintain critical programs that millions of Californians rely on on a daily basis. We enacted groundbreaking gun reform legislation to protect our communities from these senseless and violent tragedies that we see all too often on a regular basis. We protected historic infrastructure investments to transit and provided new financing and funding flexibility for our public transportation systems. We enshrine strong consumer protections for Californians by cracking down on hidden consumer fees and passed legislation in the special session this year that created an unprecedented transparency into the oil industry to protect consumers at the pump. And we took major steps to help move unhoused Californians off the streets and into housing where they can access the much-needed services. I chair the Senate Committee on Energy and Utilities, and I'm committed to ensuring that our power continues to be safe, reliable, but most importantly, affordable to all residents as we transition to renewable energy. Also, in the last two years, I've served on the reparations task force, the first in this nation. We concluded our work on June 30th of this year. The task force submitted its final report to the legislature and the governor. That report is over 1,100 pages long, and it includes 115 recommendations to repair the lasting harms suffered by descendants of chattel slavery and other African-Americans in this country. There is much work to be done to educate not only my legislative colleagues, but all of Californians as a whole about reparations. The key to this education is getting people to understand reparations, it's not a gift, it's not a handout, and it's certainly not charity. It is a debt that was promised, it's a debt that is old, and is a debt that's 160 years overdue. Now, I'll just move quickly to the legislation. I introduced 18 bills this year. We were able to get a number of those to the governor's desk, and he signed eight of those bills this year. First, I'll start with SB 673, known as the Ebony Alert, which addresses the pervasive issue of missing African-American women and children by creating a specific emergency notification system similar to the Amber Alert. The Ebony Alert would provide law enforcement with additional tools to disseminate timely, accurate information to the public and the media to more effectively assist local law enforcement for missing young youth, black youth, I should say, and young women. Currently, African-Americans make up 12% of the state and nation's population, but make up 38% of those individuals that go missing on a regular basis. SB 392, better known as the Tidewalk Exemption for the Intuit Dome. I was one of the joint authors that created the legislation to build a new Clipper Arena that you see going up on the corner of Prairie and Century. But you need a Tidewalk exemption in order to sell or advertise alcohol hall in any sporting arena here in California. This affords them this opportunity. Next is SB 384, Barbering and Cosmetology. It allows licensed barbers and cosmetologists who have received their first violation for minor safety infraction to take training courses and keep the violation off their record, similar to your first violation in driving, so individuals don't lose their livelihood. As we all know, this bill allows workers, many of whom are women and minority entrepreneurs, to protect their license and livelihood while they're receiving additional educational training, safety training. SB 51, known as the Cannabis Provisional License, despite the fact that the city of Lawndale does not allow cannabis to be sold here, it's legal in California, so for those cities that do, this assists those disabled veterans, women, and minority operators who want to stand up their business. They get five years of provisional license while they're negotiating a state license and a local license. It's a very cumbersome and costly process. SB 51 just provides social equity applicants the opportunity to overcome challenges related to entering this market. SB 413, Extending Inner District Permit Appeals, gives California larger county offices of education and parents and guardians the proper time to adequately prepare and hear an appeal when a student wants to change school districts in their county. This bill renews the current 60-day timeline for county boards to make their decision to allow for the best outcome for their students and their families. SB 661, Student Athletes. Three years ago, I authored SB 206, better known as Fair Play to Play, now referred to as NIL, Name, Image, and Likeness. But we saw where these kids were making millions of dollars and had no financial literacy. Now, it requires any Division 1 and Division 2 school to provide financial literacy to these individuals, and it also protects an athlete, if he or she is injured while playing, that their scholarship is protected and they're allowed to finish school with no additional burden cost to them. SB 700, Employment Discrimination Based on Cannabis Use. This simply prevents an employer from asking a job applicant about their prior use, not their current use, but their prior use. It does not change existing law pertaining to testing for cannabis or prohibiting cannabis use on the job. It just simply says you can no longer ask that question in a job interview because it's prevented hundreds of, if not thousands, of individuals to become gainfully employed. SB 449, Police Decertification Technical Cleanup. Three years ago, I authored SB 2, which was the police decertification here in the state of California. We became the 47th state to have a decertification process. This just makes it some technical changes and makes it fair and transparent to the law enforcement officers. When police officers violate public trust, California now has a process to ensure that person can never, ever be responsible for wearing the badge and uniform again, and we've seen similar incidents just recently in San Jose, so we want to make sure that doesn't happen in our community. So, this is what this bill does, simply provides a fair and transparent way for that. And lastly, a bill that I introduced that we're still moving forward, we just didn't get it through both houses, is SB 490, and it's just the reparations task force. It just stands up the infrastructure, so whatever reparations looks like over the next couple of years, you need a governmental entity, a governmental agency to implement that, and that's what we'll do. And quickly, I was able to secure $10 million. Despite being in the deficit this year, we had $10 million member requests, as we've had in the past, and just some of those things, which a half a million for the Daimler Institute at Cal State Domingos Hills, which trains fellows in governmental and areas of diplomacy and intergovernmental relations. We secured $3 million for improvement of renovations of the gym at Raleigh Park in the city of Gardena. There's also an accelerated radio program. Many of you might be familiar with KGLH radio station and air personality Kevin Nash. He has a nonprofit that he's been funding for the last 10 years out of his pocket, training young folks from the South Bay, how to be not only engineers, air personalities, producers of radio shows, so we secured money for him to do that. And we secured $15 million for Cal State Domingos Hills for infrastructure improvements. And I'll just quickly end on district events. Tomorrow will be my annual turkey giveaway at Cal State, I mean, not Cal State, at El Camino College from 10:00 to 12:00 p.m., until turkey's last. And I want to thank Councilman Kearney for volunteering again. He's volunteered over the last number of years, and many of the council up here for their support, and many of the volunteers in the community. We'll be again at El Camino College from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon, and we'll be giving away turkeys, pies, pot roast to over 1,000 families that are in need, not in greed, in need of a turkey for this holiday season. And we'll also be having our toy giveaway on December 9th, and I forget the location because we had to change, but we invite all your residents to come out and participate in both of those programs. So, I will stop right there, and if there's any questions, we'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, Senator, and thank you for looking straight at me when you said, "in need, not in greed." I really appreciate that. I guess you probably heard it, I was planning on coming through.
I need one.
I appreciate that. No, but seriously, I want to thank you for all the hard work that you're doing in Sacramento. These bills are just a testament of all the hard work and long nights you spent in Sacramento getting these bills through to the governor's desk, and we really appreciate it. I just want to highlight just one real quick to show my appreciation. SB 673, the Ebony Alert. As a father of three young ladies, of course, I appreciate this bill and what it's meant to do, to keep our young folks, particularly African-American, decent, safe, and when they, for whatever reason, do end up disappearing, that we have a system whereby we can fastly identify their whereabouts. I want to thank you for that, Senator. Also, you were saying you was pretty successful in getting a sizable amount to the Daimler Institute. I appreciate that. But while you're here, I have a question for you, a request for you for next time.
I don't know if this is proper. Close moms never fed, so you got to talk to me.
Stop me, Madam Attorney, if this is not appropriate, but we're building a youth center, a youth development center, you know, here in the city of Lawndale, and we can definitely use some funding.
We need to know about it. If there's going to be, again, we've been fortunate over the last six years to have member requests, and that's what we ask for our local elected officials and our nonprofits to let us know what those needs are, and we'd be more than happy to run them up the flagpole, and if there's dollars there, I'd be more than happy to champion that for you guys.
All right, we appreciate that. Thank you, sir. Anyone have any comments they want to?
I'll just say, I'm looking forward to seeing you again this January, and I'd like to say publicly to everybody that's sitting here and that's watching in Lawndale, how proud I was last year when I was and Pat were up representing our city at Contract Cities, and who was there to show us around but our own senator? And there was only the two of us, I think, in your district up there at that time. So, thank you for that incredible opportunity that we were very fortunate to actually walk on the floor there in the assembly and enjoy it and learn a little bit about the room. It meant the world to a lot of us in Contract Cities, and I think especially to myself and to Pat, that you were the one that was there and able to show us around. And I look forward to seeing you this time around with Contract Cities and learning more about what's going on on our state level.
My pleasure, and as I tell folks who visit, that's your house. And if I'm available, I'm going to make sure you have access to your house. That's the people's house.
Once again, thank you, Senator, for being here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council.
Senator Stephen Bradford.
Thank you. Have a great holiday.
You, too. All right, let's see what else we have on our agenda. Now, we are on oral communications. Those who like to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda, you may do so at this time. We ask that you line up by the flag. When it becomes your turn, if you would approach the podium, if you would start with your name first, we would appreciate that. At about two and a half minutes, the amber light will come on and give you the signal to start wrapping things up. You don't have to wait for your name to be called, just simply come to the podium after the person that preceded you has concluded. Yes, sir?
I am Ray Holler, homeowner in southwest Lawndale. I am thankful to the city council on staff and county sheriff and distinguished guests for everything you do for us every day. Moving on, I missed the presentation, or the meeting, two weeks ago, city council meeting, I had a conflict, and I missed the presentation on the automatic license plate recognition program. And I would have asked the following questions, and I've kind of come into this later, I apologize for the sloppy presentation, but the first one is, where are the data and metrics which show how much crime, if any, is solved and are reduced by the use and expense of these systems? The speaker said the license plates would be compared to hot lists of license plates for further work by law enforcement. But why can't the cameras in the neighboring cities do this? Do we have so much crime and criminals in Lawndale that we need to add more surveillance of Lawndaleans? The camera systems have software and data storage which must be maintained. Will that be maintained only by sworn law enforcement, as the presenter suggested? Manhattan Beach privacy policy was apparently handed out. I didn't see it in the agenda package, but I didn't work my way through it, but that's, I don't, so I don't know if that found it, so I don't really know what kind of you have in mind for a privacy policy, and of course, that's a great concern, as evidenced by the questions at the time. When will we get our privacy, our own privacy policy for review? And what metrics will we use to track, to ensure that the expense and reduction in privacy of this system are worth it? Now, and lastly, an MOU with the LASD is required for other parties to have access to the data. Where is the proposed MOU for Lawndale shown? Which agencies do they, will have access, and what is done in other cities? And I just want to add some possibilities, Neighborhood City Police, California Highway Patrol, Homeland Security, FBI, CIA, and I'm sure there are others. So, again, I apologize for the kind of, I have a much better presentation here, and I expect to come back and address this topic again. And I think you're off to a better-than-average start, because I'll tell you later on about how bad it can be in another city where Lawndale is doing better than they are, you know, in the beginning. So, but I think there's a lot of work to be done. I'm greatly concerned about this program, and I thank you for hearing my comments.
Thank you. Yes, Mayor?
Good evening. This is Michelle Pina from Lawndale Library, and I want to start by thanking Madam Mayor and the Mayor Pauline Miles for attending the Saturday at the event that we had to celebrate LA versus Hate. Just some quick announcements of some of the events we're going to be having at the library. Smarty Pants Storytime, we'd like to invite all children 2 to 5 years old, whether parent or caregiver, to join us for Smarty Pants Storytime, to enjoy books, songs, rhymes, and movement while learning school readiness skills. Attendance is limited, and advanced registration is required. And this is Thursdays from 10:30 to 11:00. We'd also like to invite all Lawndale's teens to get involved at the library. Join the teen advisory board and help shape the future of teen activities and collections at Lawndale Library. Participants can earn service hours for attending meetings, and new members are always welcome. And this meeting is going to happen next week, November 30th, from 4:00 to 5:00. We'd also like to invite our adults ESL Book Club. It's going to be Tuesday, December 5th, from 5:00 to 6:00, and this is meant for them to practice reading and speaking English with other English-language learners in a judgment-free and supportive space. Discussions will focus on speaking skills, learning new words, and pronunciations. And lastly, we have a gardening club for adults, and it's going to be the Saturday, December 9th and December 23rd, from 11:00 to 12:00 p.m. And that's all for me. Thank you.
Yes, sir?
How you guys doing? I've never done this before, so you guys might have to bear with me, but I just want to start off by saying that I was born and raised in this city, and I've been here my entire life. I went to Jane Addams Elementary School with Ms. Gorman's son, went to Jane Addams Middle School, and turned into middle school into Lawndale High School. And throughout my 30 years of living in Lawndale, I've never seen, I've never seen anything on my street like this. I just want to address the need for parking in my, you know, in my direct neighborhood on my street. There was a new building that was built next door to my home, 40, 50 units, I think. We came, previous city council meetings before the building was built, and they told us that each resident there has two parking spots and one guest spot. Those are just not being utilized. People who live on the actual street, who don't have driveways, are forced to park on the actual street, and now we don't have any street parking. I've placed more than 120 calls to the parking enforcement every day when I come home from work, letting them know that this is an issue, and nothing's been done yet. They've told me that there's a law about 72 hours of parking, cars in one spot for more than 72 hours. I can go ahead and call and let them know, like, hey, this car's been here, they'll come and tag it. And they do do that for me, so I am grateful. But it's just becoming an issue because every time someone comes out and they leave a warning sticker on someone's car, it doesn't really do much. If there's law in place and I break it, and I know that I'm just going to get a slap on the wrist every single time, I can toss the warning right back into the street, nothing, nothing happens. There has to be some type of, like, repercussion for breaking the law. I've called Sheriff's Department, I don't know who else that I would have to go to. I'm here today because this week would be a perfect example of this law. I'm here today because this week would be a perfect example of this law. Right after street sweeping, people bring their car onto the street and leave it there. So, if anyone wants to stop by and see that cars are in the same spot for weeks at a time, and nothing happens, there can be chalk put on wheels all day long, but if there's no real, you know, there's no real repercussion for doing so, that's why I'm here. I just want to be able to come home from work after 14, 15-hour day, just like I'm sure all of you guys do, and be able to park and walk inside my home, and not have to park four, five, sometimes six blocks away. Thank you.
Could you state your name?
Ali Zadi. You're welcome.
My name is Salina Arin, and I have been in the United States for the last 40 years. I've been living in Lawndale City for approximately over 30 years. And this Mr. Ali Zadi is my son. We have the same problem. You know, we go to work every day. We come back, you know, there's no parking. There are residents, you know, that live there. They have, I guess, you know, they don't have the use of the cars. They just live for the parking. As soon as the street cleaning is done, they park their cars, they hog the parking. If they get, you know, the warning, they would swap the cars, you know, they would move one car in front and then another in the back. And then if you tell them something, you know, they will show you. I'm really sorry, you know, to say that. They will show you the finger, they will curse you out, you know. And we have, we have called, you know, parking enforcement so many times. We have called, you know, the Lawndale City, but, sorry, the London Police Department. They don't do anything. Like, they said, you know, like, what evidence do you have? Like, I can't record them when they curse us. That's against the law, you know. I cannot do that. So, I don't know, you know, like, how, you know, this problem can be solved. I know, you know, that's a semi-commercial street. We know that, you know, like, the rusher company that just came in, they're, they're very nice, you know. Sometimes, you know, like, I had, recently I had done, you know, my knee replacement, and they see me, you know, like, struggling to walk. They would tell me, you know, to park in their driveway, and then if somebody needs to get out, you know, they would call me. They have my number. They have been really nice. But, you know, the residents over there, they're like dog houses where six people, seven people live in those houses, and they have free cars that are no use. They do not move those cars. So, this is, this is an ongoing issue. You know, we need a permanent, you know, solution, you know, to this problem. And then the parking enforcement, you know, they come, they put the warning sign, sticker. One of the neighbors, you know, they take, you know, all the stickers and they put it on my car, and that's called harassment, because they know that we complain. And I'm not scared of that, you know, because, you know, I'm not going against the law, and I'm not doing anything, you know, that would hurt somebody. It's my right, you know, and I will go with it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Uzair Pasta, and my family and I have lived in Lawndale for majority of our lives before we moved to Torrance, but they still have a rental property here in Lawndale. Very recently, we received a notification and a citation on July 4th of illegal fireworks happening on our property, even though we were not present at the time of the violation. And our tenants have confirmed that they were not the people that committed the violation. Now, mind you, our property is open to the public, so anyone can walk in and light up a bunch of fireworks and then get cited and then leave. And because of the recent ordinance, instead of actually being cited of the person who's committing the crime, the landlords are the ones that are given the ticket rather than the people that actually do the crime. So, when we went to get more information from this very city about the citation, we were misguided about what the next steps were. And we were told that there was video and photographic proof about who the violators were, but we wouldn't be able to get that proof or evidence until we came to the hearing and paid the fine. So, they told us to pay for the $2,500, and we were also told not to come to other council meetings before we attended the hearing. We were never told what information was needed from us to prove that the violation did not occur from us or our tenants, nor would we know how the hearing would proceed on the day of. When we came to the hearing, the individual who worked for the city claimed that she didn't take any videos or photos of the day of the violation. She just wrote on her notes that there was a violation and cited our property's name without going to ID the people and the perpetrators, and she just sat in the back of the car and wrote it, even though she viewed over 100 people on the day of July 4th citing numerous people for the same violation. In the city ordinance itself on the website, it says that fireworks citations, how the community engagers should take photo and video proof. And when we told the discrepancies in her case and in her testimony, especially since it occurred at 7:55, which meant the sun hadn't set yet, so the determination of whether or not it was illegal or legal fireworks was still up for discussion. We were told that we had to prove that the violation did not occur, even though, according to California ordinance, Section 11.2.08, the burden of proof should be on the city when it comes to administrative hearings. We were told that the burden of proof lies on us, that we had to prove that we weren't there to commit a crime that we did not commit. And so, we ask that the city council reevaluate this ordinance and come in terms of the fireworks citation, especially since it's not addressing the root cause of the actual people that are committing the crime. And we ask you to reevaluate our citation against the $2,500, because we still haven't heard back about what the next steps are, and the mediator has now said that we have to go to a Superior Court in downtown to appeal against the city of Lawndale. So, please, we ask you guys to reevaluate.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Alexander Rigaris. I was born, literally, born here in Lawndale 74 years ago. Right on the street that you have over there, that's where my house used to be. I lived in the back. I went to all the schools here except for Roosevelt. It's the only school I never went to. Went to Lieutenant losing a high school. Was here before, way before Lawndale High School was built, and all the famous people, they came from there. I know, well, I've probably forgotten a lot of names in this city, but there's a lot of people that I do know in the city. And I knew your dad quite a bit. Suarezes, I know the Suarezes. Ava and everybody that lived over here on 153rd and Freeman. That's where I, my last residence, before I joined the service. And those are the only years that I was gone was time in service and twice reenlisted and a short stint with the Sheriff's Department back in the days when they had the reserves. I was working out of Lennox every weekend. Boy, that was a, that was a tough day. Worst thing, worst.
Sir, if I can get you to address the council, they'll be here all night, so you can, you can talk to them.
Yeah, I know. 1950s, that was terrible. But anyway, I agreed for some of the things that these people have been taking about the parking. Court Lawndale forever has that parking problem. You just can't seem to get it fixed, but of course, the more people come in, the more problems you're gonna have. I have a problem on my street, 173rd, just off of Ramona. Ramona is a very busy street, very busy. Up and down, nobody stops for stop signs. And it's hard to catch people all the time, including the fireworks thing and everything else. And no matter how much you call, it's, and I got, I used to work for the city also. I was in the other committee, not the regular council, but I forgot what the other one was called. Been in this, where you're at, a few times. Also, yeah, the parking over there is atrocious. I got neighbors that own 10 cars just right next to me. Got 10 cars, puts them all over. And then the other people, they have problems too. But they park wherever they want, you know, double park in front of the hydrant, on the red, all the way around the corner. It's, it's a pain, but, you know, again, what are you gonna do? Make a call, and I have many times. Neighbors, not all sections, I'm telling you. I've lived in a lot of sections in Lawndale, but neighbors.
Time's expired.
With each other.
All right, go ahead and wrap it up for me, sir. Go ahead and wrap it up for me. Your time has expired.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay.
But, but the sheriffs will be here all night. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Sophia Pasta.
Good night.
Very rude, dude.
My name is Sophia Pasta, and I'm here for citation I was given on July 4th for the illegal fireworks. That's my rental property. I don't know who did it. And we came to the city. We were told we have to pay the citation amount, which is $2,500, and then we have to contest if we don't, if we didn't do it. We came to the hearing, mediator listened to us, listened to the person who cited us, and we were never told that we have to bring our affidavit from our tenant that they didn't do it. So, proof of burden comes to us. And we were told from the city that we have to come to the hearing. We will able to see the videos and the photographs officer did take it, but that wasn't the true. On the day when we came here, we were told she never took the photographs, never took any videos, and there's no proof that any of my tenant did it. In her notes, she mentioned there's a group of people, a man and a woman, and two children did the fireworks at the front of my property. Now, it was 7:55 of the time, a small group, two children, and a man and a woman, how hard it was to take for her to take the photographs and prove it that who were the tenant. Now, we are the one who are cited, and then when mediator put the proof of burden on us, and we were told to go appeal it. No one guided us where to go for the appeal and all that. We found out our own. We went to the Superior and then submit that thing. Now, another thing is that the lady who was cited us, we told her, why didn't she call the police when there was illegal fireworks happening? She said there was a shortage of the police. But 4th of July is the big thing. Why city of Lawndale didn't arrange enough police officers? Or if something is happening, she could have just called and have them come and look at whatever going on on the front of the property. We were cited and we were not guided, and still we have a proof of burden. And we were never told that we have to bring the affidavit of, from our tenant. So, I think city have to do something regards to that. It's not only us that we were cited. It was more than 100 people they were cited, and most of them, they were done by the tenant. Who knows by who, but the landlords were cited, and we don't even live there. We didn't do it. We don't know who did it. And it's like, it's my word against city, and city was against me. So, I think city need to do something on that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
This is the most I've ever talked to the city council in my life last year. But I, all I wanted to say is, I want to thank you guys. I heard you guys wrote a letter. I want to make sure I got that out there. Metro is totally lying to us on a lot of subjects. They said that they'll build that for $2 million over here and $1 billion over there. You know how many budgets Metro has came in that's been under budget? Zeros. You know how many has came over budget? Over 1,000. How much over? 15 to 30% over on every one of them. And the last one they did, the green line down here, that they just had all the lines hooked together. It was supposed to be a four-year project. It turned out to be 12 years. So, you think about that. Wherever they go down, it's gonna be 12 years or more. They said it would be six years, 1942. It'll be to the year 60. That's how long it will take them to build it. And by the way, if I went and built the house and I went to your house and said, that's a $300,000 house I'm building you, and I come back halfway and go, ah, it's $900,000. You know how long I'd be in business? I wouldn't. The metro is really destroying what you do. If it's $1 billion, don't even put a budget on it. Just say, we want it here, we want it there, or we don't want it. Whatever they want to say, but just don't put a budget on it, because they use the budget to manipulate where they want to put it. That's the only thing the budget is, because that budget is gone. That budget will never make it. If that budget down there for a one-mile place went 12 times over budget, and it was $1 billion, so that means it was $12 billion to correct, collect four lines together. $12 billion. We should be able to get the Taj Mahal over here for what they're doing, and no one sees it. No one sees, you guys see it, but you talk to Metro, oh, no, it won't be that much. But the surveyors came up to my house again this week, the same surveyors that did it. They come up there and they resurveying the property again, and they put new stakes out there and everything, because I says, I think it's a 30-foot road. And I don't know if it is or not, but I'm almost positive. My dad won't lie. He said it was a 30-foot road out there. They're saying it's a 20-foot road. My attorney says they could have pushed in the wrong button and put a two instead of a three, and it could have been a 30-foot road. If there's a 30-foot road there, they can't build a train down our place. And it's supposed to be 42 feet from the gas lines. There's no way it's gonna be 42 lane from the, from the train being there. It is no way it's gonna be 42 feet away from the train. You can look that up. That's the law. And these guys, I owe you guys so much, man, because if it wasn't for you guys, I'd be devastated. And then they sent me a bill, and I did make a mistake on it. I was at night. I was coming home from a job, and I thought it was $640,000 they were gonna lean my place, but it was $640. I know. I screwed up. But I, hey, and I didn't have my glasses, and I thought, wow, this is crazy. And then I got yelled at when I got home. So, that took care of that. Anyway, thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi. Happy to see everybody, as always. I just wanted to add a couple of things. As you know, tomorrow is our turkey giveaway. We are super excited, and it's first come, first served. So, if you do know someone who's in need and they didn't register, that's just fine. They can still come out. At El Camino College, come down the Manhattan Beach side. The first parking lot passed Alonzo Park, and you can start lining up early. Unfortunately, they are doing some sewer work on the street, so that's gonna be what it's gonna be. But we'll open the doors at 10 o'clock, and they're gonna open the campus at 9:00. So, they will start to bring the cars off the road. The second thing is the toy giveaway is the 9th. It's a Saturday, and it's at Dominguez Hills on the north lawn. It's where we did our backpack giveaway, and it will be more than just a turkey giveaway. There'll be lots of fun activities, so bring the family, bring the kids. I'm just gonna say what we want, and hopefully it works out, but we're gonna have some snow and some animals, and it'll be a good time. And definitely, I know we'll have toys for sure. So, I just want to share that. I put some of these flyers back in the back, and I'll make sure I'll continue to bring them until the December date. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any others wishing to speak to this body on the oral communications? Okay, with that, we'll close oral communications, and we'll bring up the diocese for comments from the council. Councilman Hoffman-Gorman.
I'd just like to start by saying thank you to all who spoke and taking the time out of your day to come up and let us know what is going on and what concerns you do have. Michelle from the library, thank you, as always, for keeping us posted. That library, I feel, is a true gift here in the city of Lawndale, and I'm very proud of the programs that we offer in that library. Joy, thank you again. And as soon as you said turkey giveaway, and I could, under my breath, I think I just heard Steve say something like, need not greed again, and that just kind of made me laugh. Thank you for the information on those, and I'm sure that you'll be seeing Lawndale residents out at both the toy giveaway and the turkey giveaway, so thank you for that. Now, on to some of the big issues. The Zaddies and their parking issue. Would the city manager or department head like to say something?
Mr. Mayor, counsel, I'll refer to Mr. Reyes. Can reach out to the adjacent property owners and talk to them and find out what the issues are and get parking enforcement out there as needed based on the information. Then I'll have Jared reach out to the property owner of the 41 units and address and remind them of the conditions of approval related to the property. So, there's several avenues, land use and then parking enforcement.
I would just like to say to the Zaddies, I was opposed to that project all the way around, just so you know, because my concern was... I would just like to say to the Zoddies, I was opposed to that project all the way around, just so you know, because my concern was that parking issue, but the state of California unfortunately didn't let the City of Longdale have an opinion on the parking, so I apologize for that. Okay, the next one, the fireworks citation, if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Attorney, we're not allowed to speak on that, and so...
Yes, you read my mind, thank you.
Would you like to say anything or just clarify why we can't speak?
Mr. Mayor, council, we can't respond to any of the comments or questions from the residents concerning that. It's in a, I can just say that folks have filed the appeals, and it sounded like some of the folks that spoke went through the administrative hearing, but on top of that, they also get to go before the Superior Court and they can appeal twice. So they have several avenues they can pursue, and we can't get into the details because they are being litigated through the court system.
Thank you for that, and lastly for Jay. Jay, of course, the City of Longdale is with you, just as you were with the City of Longdale. We're opposed to this metro, we'll always be opposed to metro, we don't need it down the right-of-way, we don't need it down Hawthorne Boulevard. The no-build option is the correct option. We've stuck to that for thirty years, we're not changing that stance, and we're in this with you, so. That is, and one other thing. Mr. Holler and the license plate readers, would one of you like to speak on the license plate?
Yes, ma'am, and council, due to the Brown Act, and I had to talk to the city attorney, we have to refer Mr. Reyes to Mr. Holler to speak to him after, because of the Brown Act, we don't want to find, it's not on the agenda. So Mr., if Mr. Reyes can meet Mr. Holler and answer any questions, it'd be great.
Thank you. All right, that's all I have.
Okay, councilman. Shoot, I wanted to say everything, but I do want to ask the city attorney or the city manager, didn't the state of California take away most of our parking restrictions now? If you're within half a mile of a transit center, you don't have to allow parking on-site?
I believe, Mr. Mayor, council, that item that's been referenced by the residents was before that time, but we do have some land use conditions that the council placed on the property, but we also have parking enforcement, and so we'll double down on the parking enforcement, and Jared will reach out to the property owner to remind him of his obligations to the city about ensuring that folks stay on their property and not park in the, park into the public right-of-way, because that was a big issue. The residents are correct, and we will address that with the property owner. This is the first I've heard of it, so we'll definitely, you know, we just call off the property owner, and then Mr. Reyes can go out there with the staff and start doing some strong, robust enforcement.
And I believe that's, I wanted to spoken everything else, but I want to thank the five young men and the four young ladies that got up to spoke, except for the last one, Alexander, he could have just kept walking out the door, and with that, I'll pass it on.
Thank you. Councilor, none of this worries.
I'd like to thank everybody that came out tonight. With regards to Mr. Holler's questions about those, if we could get samples of those, because it's still something that I know a few of us were hesitant about, so once, if we could get the information as well that was asked.
Sure, so we can always agendize it again, too, you can provide direction to the city manager for a future agenda, and then maybe it can be addressed with more specific questions from the council as well.
Okay, I guess, yeah, I guess I was just curious as to the responses that Mr. Holler got, if we could get them. I know we already discussed it, so I don't know how that information gets disseminated, but...
Sure, we'll, we'll work on it with staff.
Okay, and then, thank you, Michelle, for the updates. You know, I'm hoping some of those teenagers also want to join our youth advisory committee, too, if they're, you know, wanting to do more than one committee, we're open to that as well. And then with regards to the, the parking, as a matter of process, can we get a brief description on, on how parking citations, if it's parked over seventy-two hours, how that works after the initial warning?
Yeah, I can explain that right now. So by law, we are required to give the person seventy-two hours, and we are required to give them a warning and windshield. So we will chalk the tires, if we chalk them today at noon, they have until Thursday at noon to move the car. If they don't, then it's legally towable, and we'll follow up and take it. If the car is gone, this is the case ninety percent of the time where it's been moved, they have, they have not broken any laws, they are allowed to keep their car on the streets for seventy-two hours. In some cases, it might be more than seventy-two hours if we're not giving a phone call. We wouldn't know if the car's been there until we get a phone call. All the seventy-two hour ones come from resident complaints, but if they move it within that seventy-two hour window, they have, there's nothing to cite for. However, when we do get complaints on a vehicle that's been parked for any length of time, the first thing we'll do is run the license plate and see if there's any things we can tow for automatically, if it's not registered, if it's got five more outstanding citations, we can tow it right away, we don't need to bother with the seventy-two. If there's nothing to cite it for, we have to give a seventy-two just legally, and we have to provide them a warning, so that's what we do. So we've probably written, I don't know, several dozen weak red tags, and when we follow up on them, most of them are moved. So, but by law, that's what we have to do, give them a warning, chalk the tires, and they have to sit within seventy-two hours to move it from the time that we chalk it. So I could give numbers of how many times we've been up to Mr. Residencies, I'm not sure if he actually gave his address, though, I did need to, I'll grab it from the, from the card. But yeah, I can find out how many times he's actually been out there and make sure we're following up, but, but if the only violation is seventy-two hours, then they have seventy-two hours from the time of a warning to move their car, and they'll still be within the law.
And then we check after the twenty-four hours.
We follow up, yeah, so when we red-tag a car, we log it, and then we know to follow up three days later. So even if our weekend crew chalked it, our full-timers know on Wednesday to come follow up, Tuesday, Wednesday to come follow up, and the Saturday, Sunday chalking is, so yeah, they're all followed up on.
And then the license plate is recorded, because in that case, if someone tries to move it to another car, we already know which car was...
Oh, yeah, when it's chalked, when the tires are chalked, we write down the license plate, so the seventy-two hour warning is a tear-away slip, half is left on windshield, the rest goes with us with the same information on it. So we know when we chalked it, we know the description of the car, license plate of the car, location of the car, and then we follow up, but we can't follow up short in the seventy-two hours. If they, if they move it in seventy-one hours, they're compliant.
Mayor, council, I want to add, just as a reminder, the conditions, years ago, when staff run the plates, we can verify if they're registered at that address, and we can talk to the property owner immediately, because that would be in violation of the use permit for the property, too. Because as the commitment from the property owner, if everyone recalls, they were going to ensure that people would not park on One Fifty-third and Gravella.
So we give them a hundred and twenty hours to move that car? That's seventy-two hours and forty-eight hours after that. That's five days to move a car.
No, seventy-two hours, like if we chalk it today at noon, they would have until Thursday at noon.
Which is...
So twelve oh one, Thursday, we could tow the car.
So it's five days?
No, that's, that's three days, that's seventy-two hours.
If you mark it seventy-two hours?
Yeah.
You come out and they have...
They have seventy-two hours.
Okay, three days. Four days, okay, it's four days still. You're marking that day.
No, no.
But why, why are we doing, is that a stat, state mandated, or is that an ordinance?
My understanding is state mandated, but yeah, because if someone was gone for the weekend, and they put their car in front of their house, and they come back Monday, yeah. And now, and we are aware, a number of residents do have many cars, I mean, more residents, more people in the house than probably should.
Why not?
There's no, we can't, we can't regulate that, you can have ten, ten people in a house, if it's, if it's safe and there's official water and the quality is fine, there's nothing to police there. And if all of them own cars, then that you have, that's a big footprint of vehicles to one house. So we are where people do leave their cars out and don't utilize their driveways and garages, but we can't force them to utilize their driveways and garages, except for the shantain in the case of the use for the, for the complex.
So correct if I'm wrong, you come out and seventy-two hours, all they got to move is a car length forward or backwards.
Correct.
And it's nil again.
Yeah, and they know that, and that's what they do, so they'll just pull it forward or back it up.
So we got to figure out something about that, too, if we can, if it's not state mandated, maybe the city attorney can answer that?
So I don't have that information in front of me, but it does seem like the council wants a little more, more background and more options possibly presented, so, you know, we can work with the city manager on that.
Thank you.
And again, the directive is always, if we can take the car because it's expired or because it's got multiple sites, we'll just take it, we don't bother with the seventy-two, seventy-two hours, the last thing we could do if we get a complaint about a car that's legally parked and legally registered.
No, no, that's okay, I just wanted more information, because I think Councilmember Hoffman-Gorman mentioned it, one of the issues we've been having is, is the housing mandated by the state, is they want us to increase, I think it's almost five, is it five thousand units? So they want more housing, which is going to impact the parking, and, and if we have mass transit, there was a law that was passed that you don't have to require it within a certain radius of the, the transit, so I only foresee the problem getting a little worse, but I would, I was hoping that the towing would be enough, deter people enough, but it sounds like they've kind of figured out the system a bit, so. I just foresee it getting worse, but I'm hoping that you can, the residents will talk to Michael and then see if there's something that we can do. And then with regards to the fireworks, I'm not going to get into the specifics of it, but I did, I had requests in several meetings, and I think that's incoming status as to how the process is working, since it was relatively new ordinance, and seeing if there are similar issues popping up that we can, that we can address, and concerning, the price is one of them, so I'm hoping we can get to that before next year so that we can better address it. And then I'll end with Mr. Gold. That was, it was actually very insightful information for, for those of you who are not familiar with how Metro and their projects come along, and I was actually at a South Bay Cities Council of Government meeting where our supervisor, flat out, in so many words, said that it was, it was a cost thing. So she's trying to request more funds and sending out letters to the federal government and to the state to see if they'll pitch in, but in so many words, she said it was going to come down to funding, which was a little scary to me, but more, I'll address more of that information at my meeting section later on, and with that, I'll pass along.
Mr. Mayor is going to answer the question for the council members, we're, we're still waiting for the appeals, there's an appeals this week, and as soon as we finalize those, we'll bring in the, hopefully try to get it to the council for update.
Madam Protema Quavis.
My colleagues said everything, asked the questions that I had, so I will not repeat those, but I want to thank everybody for coming out and speaking. Please come and talk to us, and we'll try to see what we could do to assist everybody.
I, too, want to thank those who came out and spoke tonight, thank you for sharing your concerns with us. I won't rehash all that was said, because I do agree with them. I do want to add, though, on the fireworks, if we also can bring back my request to look at the reducing the bail amount, because I do believe the bail amount, as I spoke about earlier, is, is an absorbent amount for bail that you have to pay for before you even get your, your hearing. So I hope that would be a part of your report, the bail amount. Yeah, Madam Librarian, thank you for being here always and telling us about the wonderful programs there at the library, we appreciate that, Michelle. And let's see what else, and of course, we spoke about the, all the parking issues. I was just going to say, in, in practice, although it's seventy-two hours, you know, but in practice, it's really more than seventy-two hours, because generally what happens is, and this happens on my block all the time. Two or three days, well, three or four days later, you realize the car's been there for more than seventy-two hours, which means they have seventy-two hours, once you call parking, for them to mark the tires or whatever they put on there to signify that, that the time clock has, has started. So it's not like you, you park there on day one, and then it's day three, no, it's usually five, four, six, whatever, before the time starts clicking, so that's really a lot of time. So that's why I think it's, it's, we have to really be proactive on these, on parking. Well, that means even more patrolling, because that's really, I mean, just like the speaker said, you, you come home at the end of the day and that same car is parked there, and you have to wait for three days. On my block, I can almost tell when a car is going to be there more than three days, I can almost tell. You can tell by the way the car is parked sometimes, you can tell by the tag sometimes, and you can tell if it's ever been parked there before. And if it's one of those, I can almost tell, I think I've been once, maybe like once, and I can tell, and after seventy-two hours, I call it in, and they have another seventy-two hours, you know, to park there. And so we have to keep that in mind and be more proactive on the parking, otherwise, it is a seventy-two and greater hours to park in a particular spot. Let's see, so I think we addressed everything. Okay. Jay, thank you once again for keeping us abreast of, of the C-line, or the K-line, as they, they call it now. Thank you, thank you for that, and we'll, we'll continue to, as you know, we will continue to fight, as we always have, and we'll continue to be with you and to be with the residents, to make sure they do right by the City of Longdale and right by our residents, so thank you for being here. And Ms. Joy Robertson left from the Bradford's office, I want to thank her, and that's all I have. We'll close public comments and comments from the council, and we will move our agenda ahead. We're on item H, the consent calendar, item, item G, yeah, item G, the consent calendar, two through five, what is...
So moved. Making motion.
Okay.
I'll second that.
The motion's been made by Becker, and then we approved the consent calendar, and Ms. Quavis seconded. Is there any questions on the consent calendar? If not, please vote on the motion.
What is three of three, ma'am?
I didn't touch anything, I don't know. I don't have the mayor up yet.
Mine says either Joe's.
I never vote right there. I know, it never said that right there.
There we go.
It's changed it.
Okay, for item number G, the motion finally passes unanimously.
It wasn't me. Yeah, it was, yeah.
We'll look into it.
Well, we're getting a new system, so. Okay. I'm sorry. Madam, did you announce it?
Yes, motion passed unanimously.
All right, thank you, thank you, ma'am. Item number six, under administration, updated Longdale Municipal Code regarding e-bikes, let's have the staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and distinguished members of the city council, thank you for this opportunity to speak with you tonight. The staff report that you have before you is regarding an update regarding Municipal Code Title Twelve regarding e-bikes. As this council will recall, several years ago, motorized scooter companies sought to revolutionize personal transportation by providing mile-to-mile rentals on electronic scooters. These scooters were left on public streets and in public parks and on public sidewalks with no compensation given to cities in terms of taxes or business licenses. This business model required the entire inventory to be kept on public city streets and city sidewalks. In two thousand nineteen, the then-city council acted to do a forty-five-day moratorium against this, against the allowance of electric scooters to be rented on public streets. That moratorium became ordinance eleven fifty-seven dash nineteen, which forbid the usage of electronic scooters for rent in the City of Longdale. The language in that ordinance, ordinance defined motorized scooter as the same definition as e-bikes. So e-bikes, by that ruling, are not allowed to be rented and stored on city streets. However, the ordinance does not prohibit the use of private ownership of e-bikes or the use of e-bikes on city streets. In fact, that right is protected by the state law of California. However, we do have restrictions that we can place on e-bikes, and the purpose of this staff report is to determine if you would like to have additional enforcement beyond what the state allows. That could include helmet usage, restricted age for riding motorized scooters and e-bikes, or no further changes at all. So that's what we have before you today. Any enforcement of this violation would have to come from sheriff's deputies, this isn't something that city staff can issue citations for, as this would be a moving violation. But staff seeks guidance from the council on how they'd like to move forward with enforcement on e-bikes.
Okay, thank you for that report. Anyone willing to, want to speak on this item?
Willing to. Willing to or want to? I guess my question would be is, is, I, I'm thinking this is a relatively new issue or potential issue that other cities are facing, I'm just curious how other cities regulate this. Just curious how other cities regulate this.
I, I don't look into it. As I said, the bikes are allowed by California state law because they are energy efficient, they're fuel efficient, so they are encouraged, but most cities don't allow the rental of them to be, to be kept on city streets because that's where the inventory is being kept. But in terms of ownership, private ownership and private usage, they are allowed to be used just the same way bicycles are. However, there are certain restrictions in terms of, as I said, safety, where and age, the age at which you can ride one of these. So we do have the, the option to make more restrictive guidelines than the state allows if we so choose. But right now, we are bound by what the state, or actually, we're following the state's guidelines on usage. And there are three different types of motorized scooters, based on speed and based on engines, but all of them do have age limits of 16, and all of them do require helmets.
And are we getting complaints from residents about, I, I, I think it's been brought up here, but what kind, or I guess what kinds of?
Sure, so we did a search of MSD stats. We didn't, haven't got a single complaint on e-bikes this entire year, although because it is something that would be enforced through the sheriff's department, if any calls did come in on e-bikes, we would just transfer to the sheriff's department, and we wouldn't have a record of it. So that's just, that's what we have. That doesn't mean we aren't getting calls, it just means we wouldn't handle them because that would be something for the sheriff to handle. I have talked with Sergeant Smith about this. There haven't been any citations written in the past year for electronic bikes, but there have been two accidents with injuries involving electric bikes. And there, for, of the 250 traffic police reports that were taken in the past year, two of them involved electronic bicycles.
Mayor, council, let me add a few, a little, there's a difference here. The scooters, where, when we regulated, we didn't want them in the city for commercial. The issue is, the e-bikes are whizzing around city hall. They're a big issue. They're going 30 miles an hour through the parking lot, 40 miles an hour flying through the backside. They're driving through the streets, they're not stopping at the stop signs. And they're young kids, they're underage, they're not wearing helmets, they're not adhering to the law enforcement, the vehicle code. So an issue that's been brought up from a council member is, do we want to increase the regulation? Yes, we do have the existing ordinance, like Mr. Reyes has mentioned, but it doesn't go into more detail of additional regulations, which is what we're asking you to consider tonight. Do you want to update the regulations to make them more strenuous, or do you want to just allow it to continue and then direct staff to work with the sheriff's department to do more enforcement? It's totally up to the council, but we do see folks flying around, it's every day. City Hall, Mr. Reyes may not see it, I see it. 30 miles an hour through the courtyard, 30 miles an hour in the back, hitting the bumps flying in the back. The residents in the back tell me the kids are coming out, and they're almost hitting them, so.
My comment would be, I would like to see what options we have. I would be open to being proactive on this, because I think that e-bikes are going to be even, become more prevalent because the cost is dropping. They're no longer $800, they're down in $200 and $300. And so I believe that the problem is going to grow. And just like wrote the street takeovers and things like that, I feel like we need to be ahead of the curve before it actually gets here and finds us. I would be open to finding out more as far as what we, as a city, could do, and bringing it back to us as potential so that we could have that discussion, and which parts of this could we agree with and which things could we not. That's what I think.
I thought with e-bikes, you had to follow the same rules that a regular bike or a car or a motorcycle. That was my understanding, so helmets for one, and they have to follow the rules of the road. So can we ask for sheriffs to act on that?
We can, we can have focused enforcement on this and do a special detail. I've spoken with Sergeant Smith about this already. We can certainly do that. We haven't done that, so that's, that's the reason for no sites being issued, but we could certainly do a detail where we spend a focused amount of time just addressing e-bike usage without changing the current principle.
I think if we start there, they're going to see we're enforcing it, because right now, we're not doing anything. So if we start enforcing the law, stopping them, or if they're minors, you know, mom and dad are going to get the ticket, not the minor.
Correct, and enforcement does, does correct behaviors, and we could, we could certainly, we could certainly focus on and directed detail to address e-bike usage.
I, I think personally, we start that, that route, and if it doesn't work, then we take other means, but I think enforcement is the first thing.
Thank, thank you for that. So, no, that's, that's fine. So I originally asked for this to be on the agenda, similar to what councilwoman Hoffman Gorman was referring to, so that we can get ahead of it, because we saw, it actually took us by storm with the, the scooters. Took a lot of cities by storm, and then we had to kind of get, you know, catch up, legislation had to catch up with it in terms of, of safety. Of course, these are not, you know, bikes are not being, I'm not really concerned about bikes being rented and stuff like that, like the scooters. It's more the use of the bikes and how they're being used, and I, I do notice that they are required to wear, you know, if you're under a certain age, helmets and things of that nature, what have you. And yes, enforcement would be the, the first step, but unlike, unlike a car, what have you, you can also ride these bikes on, on private property and things of that nature, what have you, and I don't think any of the legislation speaks to that aspect of whether or not they be allowed on, as the city manager said, across the, you know, across the, across the yard or what have you, or in the parks, or how fast can you go if you are traveling on an e-bike through the city hall campus or whatever. It doesn't really speak to those issues. I mean, we can address, of course, the law enforcement aspect of it first, because I already have that as a tool. If you're driving, riding an e-bike, of course, you have to come to a complete stop, you know, like everyone else, except for bicycles, you don't have to come to, to a complete stop, you know, now, depending on what kind of, you know, signal you're on, if it's a stop sign or what have you, because that legislation changed a few years ago, what have you. But these e-bikes, you have to follow pretty much the same rules of the road as if you was in a car or a motorcycle, right? So yeah, law enforcement, I mean, enforcing those provisions, as well as look to see if there's any other options that we need to control it when it's not on the streets. Because I see these, these kids on these bikes, they're, they could be at the school or in the parking lot, you know, and, which is fine, you know, I want them to have fun, but I want it to be safe, right? I don't want them to go 30 miles an hour, you know, and run into a car, and they don't have a helmet on, right? At the same time.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I think it might be helpful to just explain how state law classifies these bikes. So they have three classes. You have class one, class two, and class three. And the helmet regulation, as well as the age limit, only applies to class three. So technically, class one and two. Class one is a max of 20 miles an hour, and so is class two. Class three bikes can hit up to 28 miles per hour, and so that's why they require age of at least 16 in a helmet, but I just wanted to, you know, provide that little breakdown. But you are correct, that generally the same laws for bikes apply to the e-bikes as well.
Well, I'm suspicious some of them have been adjusted or something, because there's many of them that are going over 28 miles an hour, and so they're doing something, these, to these things to hot rod them.
Which is, which is really, kind of strange to me, is that if, if, if you're on an e-bike and you're class one or two, and that e-bike can go 20 miles an hour, you don't have to have a helmet on. But if you're on a bicycle, which you can, if, if you're lucky, you can get it up to five miles an hour, you have to ride, you have to have a helmet on. You know, if you're under a certain age, right? Which is kind of, kind of, see, that's what I'm talking about when I say the legislation hasn't really, you know, caught up with the, the realities of it, you know.
Can we just, I mean, if we're seeing it happening out here, put prohibit riding?
It's already up, the signs are already up there.
Okay, then, can we just have someone take a, stand there for a little while and start ticketing? I mean, they're driving around, they might as well, during school hours, put a car across the street.
I think what the problem is, though, is by the time you call it in and you get an officer to respond, they're down at the other end of the city, because they're going 30 miles an hour.
And the officer have to see them going 30 miles an hour through.
That's the part of the problem. For me, I kind of see it as a regulation issue, because you can make it stricter, but that still doesn't solve the problem of making sure, you know, I, I don't know that it's going to deter people from still following the law. And I also don't want it to be where someone who wants one, you know, I don't want it to be too restrictive in, in the sense that people, you know, were, were like essentially banning them. I think this is something that's, you'd want to use, you know, versus your car, help alleviate parking problems. So I guess, I guess, I mean, I would need more information, but I'd want to start with the regulating part and see, you know, what exactly, but you know, there are some safety things that I think we could address, such as the helmets and other things, and, and I think if you start with the regulation part, then people, you know, will start abiding by it. But if we haven't been doing enforcement, then I think, I don't know that stricter regulations are going to.
Well, I think that regulating would be a good, or starting to pay attention to them is a good, well, like Shirley said, that is a good start. But I do think that we, as a council, need the education is what other cities around us are doing and putting into their ordinances, because again, I'd like to be in front of this thing, not again, not behind it. And, and that's not to say that I'm against these things, just use them correctly. And it's, it's sad, you know, it's just going to take one kid versus one car, but ends up with a head trauma that is damaged now forever. And there's some times when you have to look at it. I saw one of these electric bikes, and this isn't even an issue that has been on, on my plate to have here on the agenda tonight, but going down from Mona the other day, there were two kids, a male riding the bike, going as fast as he could with a female on the back of it, both of them unhelmeded, and my passenger said, and I bet their parents have no clue this is going on. And it's true, they're going to get the, the phone call from the hospital when that accident occurs. It only takes one accident. So I, I do think that us looking into it and asking staff to bring us back what other cities are doing, even though, whether we act upon it or not, we all should be informed of what other cities are doing.
I agree. I guess just part of my issue was, it sounds like they're not following just the ones we already have, and so we need to be on that right away for that reason.
I agree.
Yeah. What the staff is asking to, is just to add a class three onto our ordinance, correct?
We're asking the council.
We have one or two already there, correct?
We're asking council to consider upgrades to all of the sections, including all of these, as well as looking at, doing enforcement or providing direction, further direction to staff. So do you want to update the ordinance to include investigating and researching, looking at other cities, or do you want to leave it as a status quo, or, and just do enforcement or provide further direction to staff?
Well, I mean, it looked like to me that we could look to see what other cities are doing, why are we doing enforcement of the existing law?
Yes, we could do, that's certainly up to the council.
Because we may, like, like the council said, we may take a look at what other cities doing and, and decide that the enforcement is good enough. But I don't know how it's going to address, like I said, going through city hall or any other private property, not private property, but you know, non-streets, off-streets.
We, we can't control the school parking lots, that's up to the schools to do it. So we can only control our city streets.
To an extent, yeah.
So if we start enforcing, then it'll, the word will get around, and I'm pretty sure if, I don't know how much a ticket is, but one ticket after another, it adds up. So mom and dad might take the bike away.
Yeah, I think, yeah, the first step is to enforce what's already on the, the books.
And it also, to me, sounds like it's a minor issue with the, the underage group, so maybe we focus in on, on that part of it, too.
Mayor and council, what you could do is direct staff to, for, move forward with enforcement, and, and if you so desire, direct staff to also bring something back with lots of research on what other cities are doing in consideration of an ordinance update, if you so wish, so get both.
And I'd be curious as to the age restrictions, if any of that.
We would bring all that, yes.
Yeah, not, yeah, not an ordinance, but just the information.
We could do informational.
Just the information.
Sorry, yes.
Yeah. I'd say we do that without, without objection.
General consensus.
I'm getting tired of comparing us with other cities, what other cities are doing. We are the heart of the South Bay. I don't care about other cities, what they do.
Yeah, it's just good to, it's just good to know.
Yeah.
It's good to know in some aspects, because, you know, you always want to make sure that you're not too much out of the, you know, for example, salaries we look at and other things, you always want to make sure you're somewhere, you know.
I disagree, but I can go with it.
Okay, without objection, that will be the, the direction.
We have to vote?
No.
No, the city attorney said you're good. So we've got your direction, council, and we'll bring it back, and we'll have Mr. Reyes work with Sergeant Smith and the sheriffs, and we'll start enforcement, and then we'll bring back an informational item for an update.
All right, thank you. Okay, next, I haven't looked at this, the next item. How are we doing on time? Almost eight o'clock. Okay, item seven, award of a contract, construction contract.
Item seven is, good evening, mayor and city council. Item seven is the award of the construction contract to J and E Asphalt Maintenance for the fiscal year 2324 citywide sign replacement project. So the city developed a local roadway safety plan, which identified a list of signs and the condition of each. On the last phase of the project, we replaced approximately 1,000 damaged or outdated signs and 500 old signposts that had reached their useful lives, and I provided a spreadsheet that identified those. This current phase will replace an additional 3,759 damaged signs and 2,000 old signposts identified in the local road safety plan, and the location map was attached as exhibit B. So it is the recommendation that city council award construction contract in the amount of $1,294 and $210 to J and E Asphalt Maintenance for the fiscal year 2324 citywide sign replacement project, and award our, and a contingency of $517,684. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you for that presentation. Any discussion on this item?
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved that we approve of staff recommendation by Kearney.
I'll second that.
And seconded by Quavis. Any discussion of the motion? The council, please vote.
For item number seven, the motion passes unanimously.
All right. Let's have the city managers report.
No items to report today, Mr. Mayor, council.
All right. Okay, let's hear item eight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council, I'll be brief. This is per the direction of the council. We agenda as an item for your consideration. It's a draft letter to the Metro Board. Thank you to the city attorney's office, they toned it down, because mine was a little tougher, and so, thank you for that, and so hopefully it meets with your approval, and then we can have the mayor sign it, and if you have any comments on the letter.
I had one comment, if that's okay. Wait, let me pull up this section. Can we add, is it okay to add in the last paragraph, to the extent these allegations are true and continue? Or, or something to the effect of if this and others continue, like other situations type thing?
We could put something to add that in and have that ready in the morning, if that pleases the council.
May I ask, do I need to abstain from this?
No, this doesn't directly deal with anything specific for the line itself, it really is just speaking to civility, so at this point, you're still okay.
Thank you.
Are we looking for a motion?
Are we looking for a motion?
Yeah.
With the, with the change added?
Uh, he needs a couple seconds.
Okay.
You say this was toned down?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, substantially.
Substantially, okay. Make sure. Okay, I'm good.
Okay, what is the pleasure this body concerning?
Well, I make a motion that we, uh, address this letter to Metro with the change that Councilwoman Suarez asked to put in there.
I'll second that.
Bookings?
Give it to her.
The motion's been moved and seconded, seconded.
It was a tie. Okay, do we need to vote on this, council, let's, council, um, vote on this one. Let's see what's happened. Yes.
For item number eight, the motion passes unanimously.
Oh, I see what's happening, because it used to make me do a couple, another step, now it's only two steps for some reason. Okay. Okay. Okay, let's hear from the mayor of City Council reports, or the teams and meetings, or anything they want to share. Yes, ma'am.
Starting with me.
That will be you.
All righty. I attended a Zoom call with California Contract Cities, in which Gascon was supposed to be speaking to, with us, and unfortunately, he didn't show up, he had another commitment. I also attended the South Bay Web's award ceremony, that was a nice evening for the recipients, and we did have one recipient from Longdale, which was awfully nice. And I attended last Wednesday night in the rain, Contract Cities Monthly Meeting. That was a good meeting, um, out at Edison. There, I, there was something else on my bucket list or my, my items of concerns that I have and I don't have right now, so I think that's it.
Thank you. Okay, I attended the Field of Honor like most of us did, it's a beautiful site, especially at night. I attended the Lobby Trusted Oversight Committee. And I also attended the South Bay Web Annual Awards Dinner, it was well-attended. And, uh, the mayor and I attended United Against Hate Week at the library. The, uh, what would you call that thing, the maid, Robert? A quilt?
A fabric.
Quilt? Okay. Okay, well, that part is nice, but the, the best part of the whole thing is a storyteller. Robert would have got into that. And with that, I pass it on.
Council, what's yours?
Um, so events that I attended, um, oh, yes, and the Field of Honor is always beautiful to see. Um, if you haven't gone at night, I would recommend going, the lights, it just looks really pretty. So I attended the, um, also the South Bay Workforce Investment Board Award Ceremony. I also attended, um, there is a volunteer awards dinner for the South Bay Cities Council of Government for, um, volunteers, we did have a Longdale resident there, Bolivia, um, so we were able to give her an award. And then I attended the, um, South Bay Cities Council of Government Board of Directors Meeting. Um, I do have some notes, we had a lot of residents show up regarding the Green Line and wanting the, the board to take a position. From what I understand, a lot of the cities are hesitant to take one, because, um, it's kind of mixed with regards to the impacted cities. Holly Mitchell did attend, and like I said earlier, she, um, stated that it was coming down to a, um, budget, um, situation. So she's sending letters, and I, I'll send them to the city manager, sorry, forgot to bring them. She did letters out to the state and the federal government, asking for more, so that the decision wouldn't be based on the budget. She's also doing a community walk, um, December sixteenth, which I will send the flyer as well, so it can be posted. Um, I, from, I believe there's going to be two, um, community meetings regarding that. Um, we also heard from the county assessor, Jeff Prang. Um, he did mention Prop nineteen inheritance, there is some work trying to repeal it, the section regarding inheritance proportion. And then we had a discussion on, um, ADUs. Um, and there was some discussion regarding how it's not, and, and I'm guessing we're having this situation, I think, that not many people are taking advantage of it, and even the ones that are being built, there, I think about a third of them are vacant or something to that effect, like they're being used as offices or some. There, there was some discussion regarding, which I found very interesting. And then, I'm trying to think if there was anything else that I took home, there was a lot of information that I jotted down, but I'm trying to be brief here. You know, I, I think that was it, uh, for the most part. So, um, I'll send the information about the Green Line tours that are supposed to take place. That way we can post them for residents, um, that aren't aware, um, but with that, I'll pass it along.
I remembered what I was thinking. First thing I want to remind the residents that on December first is Angel Tree lighting here at City Hall, and it's always a lovely event, please come and join us. The other thing I wanted to ask is, and I know this is a topic, because we have residents that are concerned, but New Year's Eve is coming, and again, we're going to be blessed with those wonderful explosions in the sky. Is there any way we can put the trailer out or do some advertisement to try to discourage again the fireworks use on New Year's Eve?
I'll, I'll talk to Public Works and see if we can put those trailers out to, you know, those little notification trailers.
Can we develop a plan real quick on how we can address that?
Yeah, I'll talk to Public Works, we can look at putting out those trailers, certainly, it's not a problem.
I, I, and maybe post something on our city website and social media and these kind of things, that again, they're illegal.
Staff will look into it, and we'll put something on there for you.
Thank you.
Um, I want to thank staff for making the Field of Honor look gorgeous at night. Um, it was great job for whoever worked out there on, on that field, it was beautiful. I think it was better than last year, that, that was my opinion this year. Um, I attended the South Bay Workforce Investment Board, uh, Twenty-eighth Annual Award Ceremony, and I want to congratulate our Longdale resident, Karina Noyola, for receiving the twenty-twenty-three Outstanding Alumni Award, um, well deserved. Also, I want to recommend those students that need, that would like to be part of the workforce to contact us, and we could give you more information, they help you with education and job training. Whether you're a veteran or, um, a mom that never worked and now, um, you need a job, they'll train you, um, and find you certain jobs. So it was a very nice, uh, award ceremony. I think that was it, and my last thing is I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Hey, thank you.
So I too, uh, attended the, um, United Against Hate Event at the, um, the library. There was the artist, um, Diane, she's a local artist, Diana Williams, she did a wonderful piece in the shape of LA County made out of, um, fabric, um, entitled Solidarity. Um, it's an art piece, of course, um, promoting, promoting solidarity between, um, you know, the races, making, um, people aware of, um, anti, um, bullying, and just, um, a piece that's, um, that promotes, um, peace, um, in the community and throughout the county. So her, um, exhibit will be on display at, um, the library for, they didn't say for how long, but it's going to be there for, for a little bit, it's a rotating piece, so it's going to go into other libraries after its, um, residency here at the, um, City of Longdale, um, Library. I also attended the, um, Sanitation District, uh, meeting, where we elected, um, Gardena Mayor, Tasha Serta, as the board chair. And, um, that was exciting, because I believe this probably the, at least the, probably the first time, it, it may have happened before, but probably in a long time, we've had, um, a female, um, chair of the board. And so we was excited to, to get her, um, on the board to represent, um, our, um, Water District, Sanitation District. So she'll do a fine job, and she'll have to go way out to Whittier, right, for the meeting, so congratulations to her. And also the Field of Honor, um, I want to thank the staff for, um, the hard work they put in on the Field of Honors. Um, it's always beautiful and, and moving, I had a chance, of course, to visit. I didn't visit, um, at night this, this time, um, I've had for the last couple of, um, um, years, but I had a chance to visit some, um, visit with some residents as they were there, enjoying, you know, the fields and talking about their, um, their veterans that they was honoring, stuff like that. So that was a, that was a, um, a good, very good, um, um, project. I want to thank the staff for their hard work, and, and for those who also, um, are security, um, team to make sure that they were, um, protected throughout those days of their own display. And with that, I think that's all I have as well, and I, I too want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. And all that.
And a shout out to Lucille Smith School, they came over and helped put the flags up, I think the first grade class.
Okay.
Am I mistaken?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. And we haven't finished yet, we do have, um, two closed doors, um, sessions, um, that we will conduct. I'm going to ask the city attorney to give us provision of the, the closed sessions.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, tonight we have two items. Um, one is conference with labor negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five seven point six. And the second is conference with legal counsel for anticipated litigation pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine subsection D four.
The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Longdale City Council will be held at six thirty PM on Monday, December fourth, in these council chambers, it's now eight fifty. Let's do it in German, yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Tonight I'd like to close our city council meeting in honor of a former council member and community volunteer, Nancy Marthens. Nancy passed away July tenth, twenty twenty-three, due to pancreatic cancer. Nancy had moved to San Diego, and the San Diego area to be near her family and to enjoy her son's twins that she loved and was very proud of. Prior to leaving Longdale, Nancy was very active within our city. In nineteen eighty-eight, she began serving as a member and secretary for the Longdale Special People, which eventually was renamed the Longdale Special People's Social Club. She served this committee until twenty twelve. She also was appointed in nineteen eighty-eight to the Park and Recreation and Social Service Commission. She served one term through nineteen ninety. She then was elected to the City Council on April fourteenth, nineteen ninety-two, and served one term. She later served as the appointed planning commissioner from June seventh, two thousand and four, serving four terms, ending May thirty-first, twenty twelve. Some other areas that she worked tirelessly for our community, she wrote the arguments in favor of Measure B, requiring voters' approval for expenditures of more than one million dollars for development of a public facility. This was in ninety, nineteen eighty-eight as well. She was part of the committee that was formed, known as the Longdale's Thirtieth Anniversary Activity Commit, Committee, which put on our thirtieth anniversary, which is a big deal here in our city. My personal thoughts and notes about Nancy, I will always remember a time when Longdale, when it was near impossible to understand the financial reports and to obtain accurate numbers on our city accounts. Nancy began combing through those reports and began asking questions and finding errors in the math that was previous overlooked. I personally give Nancy some, most of the credit in finding, in these findings, because Longdale was not always financially sound. The city faced layoffs and was financially unstable. It only started turning around once Nancy and a few other people, including my dad, became involved with the financial records of the city. Also, I will never forget that Nancy was one of the main voices working to keep Longdale High open during the early nineteen eighties. She and her friend, Virginia Rhodes, were at all the Centinela Valley Union High School District meetings and worked tirelessly, again, for the community she called home. Nancy ran for mayor in nineteen ninety-four, nineteen ninety-six, and nineteen ninety-eight. These elections were against my dad, and Nancy and my dad were trusted friends that argued and had many differences politically, but still remained friends. I think that is something pretty noteworthy and respected. In closing, Nancy Marthens is a person that had many interests in our city. In my view, she should be remembered for all she worked on to better our community. She was passionate about the quality of life for those who lived here in Longdale, and I, for one, will never forget the work she did here while she called Longdale home. Thank you to her son, Darren, for allowing me the opportunity to share this information with our community, and may I express my deepest condolences to him and the rest of her family and friends in the loss of this true friend of Longdale.
Thank you, and with that, we are adjourned, thank you.